Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's nine o'clock. I want to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December the 13th, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Century Jury Room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we are very pleased to have with us Kim Irwin, the Executive Director of the Brazos Pregnancy Clinic. Ms. Irwin, please do the invocation, please.
Good morning. Holy Lord God, we thank you, Father, for this day you've given us. We thank you for the rain that you've provided for the nourishment of the ground, Lord God, and for our water tables. I thank you, Lord God, for the rainbows that you provide in our lives each and every day, for us waking up to be with family and friends. And most of the Lord, I thank you that we live in this county, Hood County. I thank you for these commissioners that work so hard for our benefit, Lord God. I pray that you watch over them, keep them strong, help this country in this county to stay strong, Lord, and follow you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
You would, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pleasure to thank you. I pledge allegiance to the states of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay. I want to remind everybody that today is the second Tuesday so that we have the comments at large. And you still are required to fill out a public participation form and hand it to Sheriff Deeds. And Sheriff Deeds will mark you in order and give them to Ms. Katie Lang, who will then hand them to me. And we'll keep them in order here. And then if you want to speak on any agenda item, you must also fill out a public participation form and do the same routine. Give it to Judge Deed. He will put you in line. And please mark on your comments at large where you are going to. That's yours.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, okay. Right now, but before we get to that, we have a special presentation today. And it's a very important presentation. And I, where is Jay Riley? He's always here. Is he here yet today? Sheriff?
Riley Dixon, the funny.
Well.
Jay?
Yeah. See if.
Jay had to run to his mother's house in Bluffdale. There was some pretty extensive damage due to the storms, and he wasn't able to make it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. We're gonna. We could do it another. Can y'all do it another time?
Yes, sir.
Because this is very important. I mean, everybody loves Jay Riley because he helps every, if there's anything around the courthouse where he's there to help. And he's the only county employee, I guess, that gets homemade cookies from about 10 different organizations. And he always tells me, I says, when do you start sharing them with the judge? He said, Judge, I don't know if I'm allowed to do that or not. So, anyway, I want to keep him so that we can do it and do pictures and let y'all read it. Because we've got Santa himself and Mrs. Claus up here, the Arless, and Mr. Holland right here to us. So, y'all are doing a big job. I'm glad you all out of the hospital. Gosh. So, thank y'all very much. But we're going to save it till the next time so we can do it afterwards. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Oh, one other comment?
Yes, sir.
We will leave you out in time.
Oh. Thank you. I had asked them, they always, we get, the Commissioners' Court allowed them to stay in there until what the first, no, like the 6th of January, I think it was, 6th of January. But we're trying to maybe have the inaugurals, the swearing in of all the elected officials sometime on January the 1st, if the weather is permitting. So, that's the spirit that y'all do. Y'all have cooperated with us year after year. And the Santa House is a big draw for Granbury. So, let's everybody give Mr. and Mrs. Claus a big hand here. Thank you. Thank you very much. And by the way, Santa just turned 80. I thought you were much older than that, but.
He could be younger.
Okay. All right. All right. So, there's no service awards then, is it, Ms. Welborn? Okay. So, that brings us to the next topic on the citizens at large. And the first speaker is Mr. Ray Taylor. Mr. Taylor, please come up.
Good morning, sir.
How are you doing this morning? I'm Ray Taylor. I'm President of the Board for Pecan Plantation Fire and EMS. For about the past year, year and a half, we've been talking with Jay Webster about getting a generator at our EMS station to replace the one we have, which is outdated. As y'all know, our EMS station is the backup EOC to Hood County. And our EMS station also, we provide coverage in Hood County when Texas EMS gets down to level zero. We just, we're at a point, we need to get something done. And we're just trying to find out where we're at with y'all. Understand Jay's gone now, and I don't know where that leaves us in the process. We got a generator at the water tower. When we started the process, we were going to put a generator at the water tower ourselves. Jay got wind of it, and we got a, the county paid for the one at the water tower because y'all put new repeaters on top of the water tower. I understand there's still some money left in the American Rescue Act. And I was hoping that's where we might be able to get some of the money. So, kind of leave it up to y'all from there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will consider it then. That's good. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Number two is Trishy Kenne.
Could you repeat that again, sir?
K-E-N-N-E. It looks like M-U-R.
When I public speak, my voice carries. So, if it gets a little loud up there, y'all just let me know.
That's okay.
Okay. Good. And you know you're getting old when you have to change your glasses to read. So, I live at the Pecan Plantation. I've been a resident there since March of this year. And I'm speaking on behalf of the bald eagles that reside across the river from Pecan, the majestic bird on the top of your flagpole. I'm reading from the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. The Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act 16 U.S.C. 668-668-D enacted in 1940 and amended several times since prohibits anyone without a permit issued by the Secretary of the Interior from taking bald or golden eagles, including their parts, including feathers, nests, or eggs. The Act provides criminal penalties for persons who take, possess, sell, purchase, barter, offer to sell, purchase or barter, transport, export, or import at any time or any manner any bald eagle or any golden eagle, alive or dead, or any port, including feathers, nest, or eggs thereof. The Act defines "take" as pursue, shoot, shoot at, poison, wound, kill, capture, trap, collect, molest, or disturb. Regulations further define "disturb" as to agitate or bother a bald or golden eagle to a degree that causes or is likely to cause based on the best scientific information available. That is injury to an eagle, a decrease in its productivity by substantially interfering with normal breeding, feeding, or sheltering behavior, nest abandonment by substantially interfering with normal breeding, feeding, or sheltering behavior. I think this paragraph speaks volumes to the peril of the bald eagles. I believe there's five, two nesting pair and one single, if the Yellow Viking Solar Farm should come in. And I would think that they could potentially fall as a violation under this federal regulation. In addition to immediate impacts, its definition also covers effects that result from human-induced alterations initiated around a previously used nest site during a time when eagles are not present. If upon the eagle's return, such alterations agitate or bother an eagle to a degree that interferes with or interrupts normal breeding, feeding, or sheltering habits and causes injury, death, or nest abandonment. A violation of the Act can result in a fine of $100,000, $200,000 for organizations, imprisonment for one year or both for a first offense. Penalties accrue substantially for additional offenses and a second violation of this Act is a felony. So, I hope that when the reinvestment zone vote comes up to you guys and the tax abatement, you consider those majestic birds, and we want to keep them protected. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Biggers.
Good morning, Court. Integrity, the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles or moral uprights. Here's a recording from an open mic on November 8th between the Judge, Commissioner Wilson, and Pastor Dan Jones in our community.
Okay. I'm going to cut you off right there, Mr. Biggers.
Why are you going to do that, Judge?
That it is not the intention of the Hood County Commissioners' Court to provide a public forum for the demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the Court to allow a member of the public to insult the honesty or integrity of the Court as a body or our members of the Court individually or collectively. I can assure you that that is being looked into right now about turning on the mic prior to the me calling the open of this meeting. It is being looked at by the Attorney General's Office and the DA's office, and the truth will come out. But you're not going to use this Commissioners' Court to insult the integrity of Mr. Wilson or myself. So, you either stop and surrender right now or again, again, I will have the sheriff remove you from this meeting. Your choice.
This is an open mic time, correct, Judge? And correct me if I'm wrong, the rules that you voted on, that you are voted on.
I told you to quit talking. You are not going to use this public forum to insult the integrity or honesty of any member of this Court. You want to do it? Let's go to court again. Let's go to law again, like we did before. Sheriff, if he says one more word, I want you to remove him from this Court.
This particular time has been voted on by this Court to have open mics. I am going to respond to comments.
You are not going to respond by insulting the integrity or honesty of a member of this Court or me. That is it. So, leave, Mr. Biggers.
It's fine for you to do that. It's fine for the Commissioner to do that, to insult me and my church, you being braggadocious in front of your own pastor, saying, I threw that guy out. Commissioner Wilson.
Sheriff, remove him right now.
Do not touch me, Sheriff. Please do not touch me because I'm going to have my say in my five minutes.
No, you're not going to have your say. Cut his mic off.
You understand what you're.
Steve, please assist the sheriff in removing Steve Biggers from this Court. Please remove him. You're the only person in four years that I've had to remove, and now you're the second time. The confrontation that you have, you talk about ministers, what about the confrontation you had in this Court with Father Stuart Smith? Shouting with him. You are through. He's through. Remove him.
Hey, Judge, I'd like to make one comment. If you read our Rules of Decorum, item number F, it says, "These rules do not prohibit public criticism of the Commissioners' Court, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service."
And what he's talking about is his, what he said about his minister, which has nothing to do with county business. You're through. I'm conducting this hearing. Remove him from the Court.
Wow. That's the second badge I wear with honor here.
Okay. The next person is John Highsmith.
Okay. Good morning. I'm here to talk about the Yellow Viking II project. And this is under consideration by the Court for a reinvestment zone and tax abatement. I represent a group within Pecan Plantation called Save the Brazos, and we are opposed. What I wanted to do this morning was talk to you very briefly about numbers. We feel very strongly that the installation of this project will adversely affect property values in Pecan Plantation, other areas too. But we live in Pecan Plantation, so I've kept this to Pecan Plantation, the effect on homes there. So, what I've done is I took the number of residences in Pecan Plantation, 2,684, and I use a median price that I got from Redfin. This is as of October 2022. So, that median price is $425,000 per home. So, if you multiply those numbers, you get a total value of $1.1 billion for the homes in Pecan Plantation. When you, when you research the effect that these solar facilities have had on property values of adjacent property owners, you get a number of 7%. Now, we believe that's a very conservative number because most of those projects historically have been in areas where you don't have many people living around them. So, we believe the number would actually be higher. But if you, if you use the 7% number, that is $79,849,000. That is the amount that will come out of the wallets of the Pecan Plantation residents. Now, I have a second part to this, and that is, I don't know any way that you've missed these ads for Pecan Plantation that sits in the median now. But the plan is to build 1,000 new homes within the next two years. So, if you take 1,000 new homes and then you multiply that by 500,000 per home, which I think is a pretty good estimate of what these, the average value will be, and take that 7%, again, that is $35 million. So, you add these two numbers together and 55, or the 70, let's call it 80 million and the 35 million, $115 million that we believe will directly affect the home values of Pecan Plantation residents. So, with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Robert Taber.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
First of all, Merry Christmas to you, gentlemen, and all the teams that work with you to support this county. My name is Robert Taber. I live in Pecan Plantation, and my residential property backs up to the historic Brazos River. I spent 36 years in the semiconductor industry. 33 years were directly involved in the design, production, and distribution of compound semiconductors, of which photovoltaics used in solar cells and solar panels, photo sensors, and optocouplers also provide key functions for higher-level assemblies like solar panels. You may have been informed by others that, like the Yellow Viking II folks, that the solar panels used to construct it are 100% reliable and environmentally safe during their reported 25-year life. I will tell you, that's simply not true. Solar panels do, in fact, degrade throughout their estimated 25-year life. They also contain several toxic materials used in the semiconductor industry that are harmful to the environment and humans. When solar panels fail, they become sources of toxic leaching into the soil below the solar panels. They crack due to mechanical stress, over voltage, excessive heat, electrical shorts, junction box failures, corrosion, including mishandling during insulation and transportation, add in mother nature forces of lightning, flood, and hail. And so, the probability for increased failures accelerates. When solar panels crack and the electronics inside of those crack, they're exposed to the environment. So, rainwater gets inside the panel, and it leaches these materials that do become released over time into the soil, and they would eventually make their way down to the environmentally sensitive Brazos River. I've read a lot about the failure rates of solar panels. And from what I've seen, after year one, we would, if you look at the 2,400-acre project, that would yield about 4.8 million solar panels on that acreage. The industry averages about 2,000 panels per acre, and you have, on average, 60 photovoltaic devices per panel. So, that's where those numbers come from, the 4.8 million panels and 288 million PV devices. So, putting these numbers into context, if you use the failure rates and the number of solar panels we're talking about, an estimate, after one year, we'd see 2,400 to 3,840 panels fail. After year 10, we would see 24,000 to 38,400 failures. That's a lot of sources of potential leaching. The solar project will require a very large energy storage system because, as we all know, the sun doesn't shine 24/7. These storage systems present their own unique set of hazards. They have toxics, gases, they can have runaway, thermal runaway, and stranded energy. Cause, and they can cause fires and explosions, not the least of which is releasing toxic materials such as cobalt, nickel, and manganese that contaminate water supplies and ecosystems. Let's also not forget the whole issue that's facing the solar energy and the EV energy, the whole subject of recycling. There is not a confirmed solid across-the-industry board process that is being used successfully today that is sound financially, just not there. They're working on it, and I hope they're successful. And the use of lithium batteries in these energy storage systems is accelerating. It's accelerating all over the place. So, here, my point is this. I am not opposed to clean energy for Hood County because solar can provide some attributes not available in other sources. What I am opposed to, and I hope you will be when this subject comes up, is the location of this solar farm right adjacent to the Brazos River that's ecologically sensitive and that river that surrounds almost completely the entire Pecan Plantation community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Nathan Carricker.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge Masagill. Good morning, gentlemen. I came here without prepared notes today. I came on short notice. I was not expecting actually to be even afforded an opportunity to speak, so pardon if I'm a little bit disorganized. I'm a resident of Pecan Plantation also. I'm presently on the Board of Directors at Pecan Plantation, but I cannot at this time speak as any spokesman or anything like that for Pecan Plantation. I'm here purely as a resident of the county and a resident of Pecan Plantation. I make my living as an airline pilot. And as a pilot, I, and I've been a lifelong pilot since I was a kid. Every time we push the throttles forward on takeoff, pilots have made a risk-benefit analysis. That's how we make our lives. That's how we survive. That's how we keep people safe in our business. My opinion, this, this solar farm project, the tax abatement portion of what, that's what you all are charged with deciding whether or not to allow a tax abatement. You're not, you don't have the power, I understand, to stop something like that from happening. But you do have the power to either grant or deny a tax abatement for it. The tax abatement issue itself is, to me, where I fail to see the benefit for Hood County. I don't see how granting a tax abatement for an energy project is going to bring any tax revenue. By definition, it is a, it is a diminution or elimination of tax revenue. So, I'm hearing lots of people citing the risks and the negative aspects of that farm being built. I have yet to have anyone explain to me what the benefit to us is. I don't believe it generates any revenue or is going to generate any revenue for schools. I don't believe it's going to generate any revenue for the county. So, the risk-benefit analysis, to me, the, if the benefit is zero, the risk doesn't need to be significant at all to be completely overshadowing the, the zero benefit aspect of it. The, I came with two points to make. I'm trying to remember what the other one was now. The land that this farm would be built on is due south of Pecan Plantation's airport, and it is, at this time right now, vacant land. It's empty land. In a pinch, in a single-engine airplane, if that engine is having difficulties or if it fails altogether, that empty land is a bona fide emergency landing place for us. If these panels go in, that goes away. Just last year, one of my fellow pilots from Pecan Plantation did experience an engine failure on takeoff coming out of the landing airstrip. And he was able to put his airplane down on vacant land and not injure himself. And he did a really great job of actually preserving a lot of the aircraft intact. And something like that happening, once this farm gets put in, is more likely to result in loss of life or severe injury for a pilot. I'm struggling to recall what my middle point was. I'm sorry. It's time, time pressure is getting to me. The risk-benefit analysis is my main point. I don't, I don't see, and I have yet to have anyone explain to me what the benefit is to us. And the risks are, I think, largely overshadowing it. So, I urge you to please not grant that tax abatement when the time comes for you to do so. Thank you.
Excuse me. Excuse me, sir. What was your last name again?
Pardon me?
What was your last name?
It's Carricker. C-A-R-R-I-K-E-R.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Next is Deborah Thorne.
T-H-O-R. Is it Thompson or Thorne? Do you live on Prospect Hill? Yes, sir, I do.
Well, that's you. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure everybody remembers the 2021 freeze we had. I think my house.
Pull the mic towards your.
Oh.
Yeah, down. There you go.
I think everyone remembers the 2021 freeze. And my house did pretty good. We got down to about 46 degrees inside. But I understand there was probably 700 people that, that died during that. So, my interest was turned towards the grid. My background, in the 1980s, I was in research and development on the, in the aerospace industry on the B-2 bomber. I was the pricer negotiator on engineering changes and got to see a lot of really cool technology. So, when I heard about the solar farm, the information I had at the time was just on rooftops and my individual solar generator that I would take to the mountains and remote areas. And so, when I heard that it was going to be 4,000 acres, 3,000 acres, 2,000 acres, at the minimum, 10 acres of glass panels covering grassland, it, I personally, did not make sense to me. A lake of glass, so to speak, with sandwiched in between the panels, toxic chemicals that through what they call. through what they call turbulence fluctuations in the panels, even if they're at a tilt of zero, the wind and rain, as we know, can eke into those panels. And of course, then we have leakage and toxic, causes toxic problems for humans and wildlife. So my next thought was why, you know, Texas in 2021, why would we have a problem with energy? And then my next thought was, I'm sure somebody's done a risk analysis of what happens when you connect a solar project, a large solar project to, to a, a large electric grid like ours. And I discovered that in Tucson, Arizona, they, they did an analysis, a risk analysis because they were, they've had their grid hooked up since 2008. So there was a lot of historical data. And the results of that risk analysis was the frequency of failure occurred 94% in the year with the solar panels. The solar panels, whenever the sun, whenever the cloud comes in between the sun and the panels, the, the solar panel drops by 60 megawatts, which I think is 60 million watts. And that triggers the breakers to trip. And when that happens, it harms the entire grid, including the large fossil fuel generators or coal-fired generators. And the whole system fails. And then I thought, oh, well, that must've been what happened in 2021. The solar panels were the, the main cause. Anyway, getting back to the thought of, of the solar panels covering grasslands, still seems very barbaric to me. It seems that the technology is simple, but it's still new and it's still in its infant stage. And I think that, I don't know why Texas is doing this. I, I would hope that we'll reverse those ideas and take at least the renewables off the grid. But I know y'all are only here to deny or, or allow this application that Viking has, has submitted. So I'm hoping that you guys will deny it for health and safety reasons. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is David Ferris. I think most of you know me. I got some handouts I'll give a little bit later. And as always, I like to give my background, a little, a little bit of my background, my undergraduate, for those that haven't been here for me before, my undergraduate degree was in physics. I've got a couple of master's degrees, one of them's an MBA in statistics and logistics and heavy math of all kinds of business systems, et cetera. Well, I know there are a lot of points talking about the solar panels, issues there. I just want to go over a couple of little logic problems, okay? I could go in on finances. I could go in on, you know, the, the mechanics of it, the deficiencies of it, et cetera, but I want to focus in on really one item. Right now, the, your power plants have a fuel backup, all right? Typically, I've read in the past, I couldn't find it recently, but like a 30-day supply. When we moved to New Hampshire, the weekend we were up there looking at a house was the big ice storm in New Hampshire. There were over a million houses and it got down to at least 100,000 that were without power for 21 days. Hence, the only house we rented and then bought had a standby battery back, standby generator propane. Didn't cover a whole lot, covered refrigerators, fans for the heaters and one light in every room and my internet. All right? But did about a third of the electricity in the house. Well, a couple of years later, I looked at replacing that with a whole home generator. All right, I have a thousand, had a thousand gallon propane tank. I could go a couple of months for 1,200 bucks in propane. Well, let me get a, a whole house generator. Looked at that, about 20 grand. And somebody said, oh, look at Tesla's Power Walls. So that's battery backups, in case you don't know. So I looked at those. I can't go over all of it, but I've got a whole lot more here. It only worked out to cover if I added heating, which I use propane for electric. If I had electric vehicles, a couple of those with level two chargers, I'd only need about 400 Tesla Power Walls at 11,000 each, worked out to 4.27 million to cover my energy for 30 days. All right? Now, obviously every day I wouldn't need it, but in that ice storm for 21 days? Okay. Here, you got to worry more about heating or air conditioning, pardon me. All right. So that one's there. You'll see more information here. I want to also, let's talk about hurricane that hit in Florida. Oh, I'm running out of time. People had to flee. Let's suppose everybody has electric cars. Houston's a big area. Now, I want you to imagine 2 million cars fleeing Houston because it changed at the last minute. And maybe they got to shift a little bit west of Fort Worth. All right? Based on the range, the average car, 200 miles plus or minus. And gee, maybe not everybody was charged. What happens when you run out of electricity in an electric car? Do you carry your little one gallon of gas and go back? No, that's not going to work. You call a tow truck. Level charging is only going to be feasible in homes. There will be very few fast chargers and public chargers in comparison because nobody's really going to use them very much. But when you have a flood like that, I've done statistical modeling and I could do it. I, I can guess realistically, there, there might be 100,000 dead vehicles around Granbury with maybe 100 public charging stations because everything is local. Forget level three charging, that requires 360, 480. You're not going to have that in homes or very many places. I worked it out, it's about 800 days to get all of those char, cars fully charged and out of Granbury. The last one I can only hit briefly. I hear people say, we can't worry about the price because it's the planet. I don't care what it is, you got to save the planet because carbon emissions. Well, there's one nonprofit org website that says, that shows the alarming graph. But if you actually look at the numbers, within 15 years, while the world and the US is going down at a very steep angle, China is going almost straight up. And within 15 years, they'll be pumping out more carbon emissions than the entire rest of the world. And within 20, it just explodes after that as well. They're, they're building, they got like 50 massively dirty coal power plants coming online in the next year to produce all of this green energy for us. So think about some of the, you, you can't live without 24-hour power, at least hospitals, heck, freezing weather, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
And then last, I do have a bunch of Excel notes, which I only made one copy of. I'll leave that with her, but these are some of my common ones for each of you. Scratch notes are going over here. And if you need help with math, which is in here, get your five-year-old grand, or your fifth grade granddaughter or grandson to come and help you with it.
Okay. The next item. Is the consent docket. Is any of the commissioners wish to discuss or pull anything from the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Do I hear appropriate motion then?
Did y'all make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It must've been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. I wish to make just one comment. I happen to notice here, before we get to Mr. Clint Head here, Hood County citizens are so great at making donations to the animal control here in Hood County. Every, there's donations every week. But Robert and Sammy Williams made a donation of $10,000. And they make donations like that quite a bit. I can't even imagine, I want to find out how much money they have made because when I read this, I, I said, we need to give them a special recognition certificate too. I think everybody here would agree. I don't want to minimize the 100, $200. That's very important too. But the amount of money that they gave is just really, do you know how much that is, Sheriff?
Total's 90,000 as of right now.
90,000? We're gonna, I think everybody here would agree, we're gonna have a certificate of appreciation for them. We're gonna give them at the next commissioners meeting. Are you going to remind me about that, Ms. Welborn?
Actually, we've already reached out to them. They're unable to attend this month, but we do have an event coming up in early spring that we plan on inviting, that Animal Control and the Sheriff's Office plan on inviting them to and recognizing them.
That's what I like about Ms. Welborn.
They've been very gracious.
She's always a step ahead of me, the, you know, that's good. Thank you very much. All right, good. Okay. No road ops, Mr. Don Linnell?
No, sir.
Okay. So we got Clint Head with Development.
Morning Judge, morning commissioners. First thing, we have days of public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of the Cross Ranch tracks 12R, 13R and 14R in precinct four.
Okay. Right now at 19 minutes till 10, we're going to convene into a public hearing.
This property is located at 2704 X.A. Meyer Road. This replat is a subdivision of tracks 12 and 13 of the Cross Ranch. It will be creating three new tracks, track 12R, which will be 2.017 acres, track 13R will, will be 2.14 acres. And when the application was submitted, there was a proposed track 14, but during the staff review, staff found that there was already a platted track 14. So the third track will be finalized as track 13R1 and it will be 2.0501 acres. These tracks will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There is no variances associated with this replat. Staff recommends approval of the replat of the Cross Ranch tracks 12R, 13R and 13R1 as presented.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners or from the public? If not, we're going to reconvene now at 17 minutes till 10 and to the Commissioners' Court. So at this time, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I move that we accept the replat of the Cross Ranch tracks 12R, 13R and 13R1 as explained by Development.
Second.
Second.
Okay. It must've been made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the replat of the Cross Ranch tracks as explained by Clint Head, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Next thing we have is a public hearing to discuss and consider updating and revising section one, development permit regulations, section two subdivision regulations, section two appendices, and section three infrastructure development regulations for manufactured home rental communities.
Okay. So at this time, at 15 minutes till 10, we're going to convene into a public hearing.
The purpose for these revisions to the development regulations is the first step in some changes into bringing the regs more up to date and bringing the submittal to court timeframe into compliance with the changes in the local government code to make the developer responsible for the total cost of engineering review, to correct some department titles that have been changed over the years, to bring the acreage requirement into compliance with the net density agreement that current, that the county currently has with Upper And to bring the street widths to 24 feet, that way they're more in line with the width, required width of a fire lane. It also does away with the chip seal paving for streets to be constructed by, will now be allowed to be constructed by HMA C hot mix or concrete. There will be some other changes later and some that will require a workshop to get the court in agreement of what they want for the changes in the RV part. But these are the changes that had to be done before those changes could be done. And it's also to break them up in smaller sections. The engineer given a price that was more than I even wanted to present to the court to redo them all. So I opted to do all the changes that I'm capable of doing myself. It's taken a little while longer since I don't get to sit down and just focus strictly on the regulations. The fees have not been updated that I know of since they were put into place. If the court chooses or wants to increase those, today you could pin a percentage in on the appendix page on the order that you have to sign. So it is recorded with the changes and I will make the changes on the published regulations. If you choose not to, that, I'm okay with that too. Staff request the court to open, or if there's any discussion, staff recommends approval.
All right. Well, we do have a couple of speakers that wish to address this first. It's Lisa Bordeaux.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you guys today? I told you I'd be back. I say that every time, right? I wanted to address the revisions to the development permit regulations and the subdivision regulations that Clint is proposing. But for those of you that haven't heard me yet, what started us down this road was concern for groundwater in some of the rural areas where subdivisions are coming in and being placed on acreage that is two acres. And more than one home is being considered. And I can, when I say more than one home, there's guest's house that are maybe put into the CCNRs that are allowed. So the, the big concern is the groundwater. And three years ago, the Upper Trinity Groundwater District had recommended to the commissioners in this court that they increase the acreage from two acres. And I believe at that time, they had recommended increasing them to five acres. And that was opposed by the commissioners at the time. And so then Upper Trinity adopts the two-acre rule. So it's kind of like a chicken and the egg thing. They're not making up the rules for the acreage. They're following what the Hood County Commissioner Court has done. So we've been kind of closely monitoring what's going on, but our concern, and I'm so sorry, we've kind of put together what we call the Comanche Peak Coalition. So I apologize for not introducing myself. Our concern is the groundwater. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're not opposed to new neighbors, but we're not going to welcome concerns about water availability. And that is the largest concern. Water is a natural, limited resource and all of us need it to survive. And we need to reflect on what the responsible thing is here. And we need to make sure whatever we do, we're not acting too late. And so three years ago, it was recommended that we increase the acreage for these rural lots. That didn't happen. And here we are again in a drought, except for today, God decided to rain and pour and give us lots of rain. But we have been through many drought situations here. Before I moved to Granbury seven years ago, I remember coming here and seeing the lake down and boats, you know, many, many feet out of the water. So the water's important. And if we keep developing the way we are with, for example, 45 acres, 22 homes, 26 homes, with the chance of a guest home that doubles, I think we're going to see a severe drawdown on our water. And I think that there needs to be more studies done. I think we need to increase the acreage. I've given you. I've given you, I just gave you, I shared with the commissioners some excerpts from Banderas County. Banderas County initiated a 10-acre rule for rural lots, for wells, because they're concerned about the drawdown. And I talked to someone with the Texas Conservation Alliance. Many of the southern counties have adopted these higher acreage limits. Now, I probably could have printed all that off of you, for you, but I would rather have just given you an example of what I've found, but I don't think it's unrealistic to consider increasing the acreage in the rural areas. There's a few other, I don't know if the Texas Water Development Board has done any groundwater studies, but I think it's worth looking at all of that. And I think if we're considering Clint's proposal to increase, or he's changing it to net acres, which, maybe it does a little bit, but it doesn't do what it needs to do. So I think we need to take some time to review, you know, similarly situated counties, and I think we need to increase this. If I had my say, I would love to increase this to 10 acres, especially out in the rural areas, because Granbury is known for this nice little town, and it's a place to come to. And if you start putting subdivisions on these backcountry roads that have no infrastructure to support them, I think we're gonna lose all that. But mostly, like I said, this is about groundwater. I have serious concerns about the drawdown developments will have if we keep allowing wells on the two-acre sized lots. That's a huge concern, and I think it needs to be reconsidered. So, you know, I would love to propose increasing it to 10-acre tracks. I don't know that everybody here will agree, but I think this is something we need to consider. So in order of the changes, I think in Section 5.4, we need to increase that to 10 acres, a net 10 acres, but I think a good compromise would to be, would be five acres. Anywhere we talk about net two acres for acreage that has neither centralized water nor wastewater systems, which I didn't even touch on, but I think, you know, we should consider increasing five acres, to five acres. I like Clint's changes in Sections 4.6D and, or C, my paper's backwards, where he is requiring only one single-family resident lot, residents to be located in the lots. Again, there is a concern. I think that when you're evaluating these lots, if you're going to do this, you have to look at the CCNRs that some of these developers put in place. Again, for example, Oak Country, or Oak Water Ranch, which was a recently platted area, the CCNRs allow a 24, a minimum square footage on a home of 24,000 feet, and you can put a guest house at a maximum square footage of 1,000. That's two homes. So to meet this requirement under 64DF, I think we need to increase, if a developer wants to allow guest homes, I think we need to increase the acreage. The other, the other item is 6.5C. I like the addition to the development requirements to have the groundwater studies done. My understanding is that was always a condition, but for some reason, it wasn't actually enforced. But I think now it really needs to be. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that the Texas, 30 Texas Administrative Code 230, that addresses these environmental reports for water, it has the water engineers, and I'm sorry, I don't know the technical name, but they actually are asking them to certify that the groundwater's gonna be available for 30 years. And I think that's a big ask of a professional that holds a license. And if you're going, and I just want to make it clear, I don't want to look back to the TECQ because their definition of the availability of groundwater is very broad without a year, but the Texas Administrative Code does reference 30 years. So having said all that, I would like us to keep considering these rule changes, but I would like for you today to, at a minimum, reject the proposal of a net two acres for non-rural areas, and consider 10, but that probably won't happen. But five at a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next figure is Courtney Coats Blackman.
Commissioners, Judge, good to see you again. I would, first of all, I am just so tickled to see that we are having a public hearing to discuss changes in the subdivision regulations here in Granbury, because I felt for a while that that's something we need to do. And I was, I was looking over some things last night, and I know that Clint Head has mentioned that there, this is a huge undertaking. I've seen his regulation book, and it's enormous. And to go through all of those regulations and make changes that need to be done, that need to be brought more current, is gonna take some time. I also noticed that there are several counties and cities who have decided to just pump the brakes a little bit and pause and take a subdivision moratorium for a period of 90 days, so that the developers and the commissioners could have a chance to look over some of these regulations, to explore what our options are. I also agree with my neighbor Lisa. She, she's very detailed. I'm not as detailed, I'm just gonna passionately speak to you here. But I do agree that with the five-acre minimum, I believe that the Upper Trinity made that recommendation for a reason three years ago. And that's kind of what these folks do, is study the water table and our groundwater and how much water we're gonna have years from now. And since that time, we have gone into one of the largest growths here in Hood County. And we're still not taking their advice. And, and I really hate that for us, and I feel like we're gonna get to a point where we, we can't reverse the horses. So, and also, I'm very concerned about the, all of the subdivisions that are going in. Every time you turn around, there's, there's a new one being proposed, and we're still relying on a volunteer fire department. I mean, those, those are things we need to consider and think about. And when I stood up here last time, we were talking about development that was going down the road from where I live. And I really got the feeling after I spoke to you, when you guys were talking amongst yourselves, that you were looking for a reason to help our cause. And, but it just wasn't there. I mean, you, you have to have the law in your books to be able to, to monitor the minimum amount of acreage allowed for a water well. You can't just pull it out of thin air, I understand that. But let's take this time, now that we're into subdivision regulations, to make these rules possible where you guys can act on them. We do not have a shortage of subdivisions in Hood County right now. We don't. Going, and I can just speak on 144. There is one new subdivision after another going in. And there are some that have been there for years and years that still aren't full. So why do we continue to do this to ourselves and to our land? We are going to affect our water. We are affecting the wildlife in the area, and we aren't going to be the best little small town in Texas. I know that people, anymore, I know that people want to move here. We've got a darling town, a great little place. But rather than just taking them all in and saying, yes, we're open to anything that you guys want to do, let's just step back from it a little bit and slow down and make some good decisions for our county. The historical committee in Granbury that keeps that whole area down there looking as historically perfect as they can, they need resistance all the time. And there are a lot of people that really get put out about having to choose historic paint colors and not being able to add to the footprint of their homes. But that hard work and those hard decisions that they have made in the city is what has made Granbury the greatest little town in Texas for three years running. We, we are just gonna have to make some hard decisions, and I implore you to do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Any other comments or questions?
I do, I do want to throw something in on that. One of the things that I always try to sit back and look at are the unintended consequences. Yeah, heck, I would, I'd be just fine if not one more person moved into Hood County. I think a lot of us would, would say that if we looked down inside. But I think one thing that we may, if we move to a larger track, 10 acres, you know, even five acres, one of the things that's gonna happen with this, we're, our proximity to the metroplex, we're a very desirable area. And if you'll look north, Parker County, there are apartment complexes going in all over the place. And if you get into something where you're, you're pushing out more of a residential development coming in, if you're pushing people into five and 10 acres, you're gonna see those places start turning into, people are gonna have private wells, and they're gonna put more population density on those acres than what we have by just having the two acres or whatever. Mr. Ferris may be able to come up with a formula on that, I'm not sure exactly where, where we come down, but I believe that there is the danger of an unintended consequence there, where we end up with more population density and more draw on the water resources by, by expanding that too far. We can, we can overshoot this.
I don't think that's the case. If you limit your density, as Clint has done, to one residence, I don't think we're gonna overpopulate our residential density. I don't understand, I'm sorry.
What the requirement, what has, what happens here is how many wells you can put on, in acreage, okay? So if they put in a public water system to service, you can service as many residences as, as you can get out of that well. So you can, if somebody comes up and creates a public water service, that takes away that population density requirement, and you can put apartment complexes on there.
Okay.
And, I mean, like I said, if you look north, they're going in all over, especially in eastern Parker County, that, you know.
Well, I think that can be addressed by the regulations, and I'm sorry I haven't read them all again, but I think you can limit where you're allowed multifamily structures like that. I think, am I, am I wrong?
Only in the water quality district. We have no zoning, so unless it's in the water quality district, we can't limit.
I think you could.
Okay, again, I'm not, you know, I'm not advocating this thing.
No, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. No, I appreciate you sharing that with me, but, you know, I guess, let's look at some other counties. There's so many other counties that have done it, that have increased the acreage. How does Banderas keep the, the multifamily? I just, I don't, I am not gonna settle on two acres. I'm worried about where I live, and I'm worried about my neighbors. And not only allowing that number of homes, if anybody lives near Comanche Peak, how many people live near Comanche Peak? Okay. So most of the people that are here are our neighbors. If you've never driven on Newai Road, which comes out on Puleksi Highway, it comes out on 144, Pear Orchard hits 144, and Peak Road hits Puleksi Highway, every entrance, when we have rain, floods. Every road back there is an S curve. We have neighbors that have horses, we have teenage children driving. So this does go against the water table issue, but it's the development issue. The development site over there on Williamson Road, that's like a straight shot road, you know? So I would like to preserve our water table, preserve our countryside, I think we need to increase lots. I think you can address centralized wells and where they're allowed, and maybe that puts more work on you, Clint, but, you know, I just, I just don't think we can have, in this particular area, 66 homes. It just doesn't serve as well. So, thank you.
I'm not sure what the Upper Trinity Groundwater District has proposed, or even if they are looking at it. And I have been doing some research. I was told recently that the Middle Trinity is using a private residence as one single-family residence. Anything above that would be considered a multifamily well, and the multifamily well has to produce so many gallons of water per minute to allow how many connections would be allowed on that well. So if you have two acres, or 10 acres, or five acres, if you drill that well and it's only producing so many gallons per minute, they're only gonna allow so many connections or so many structures. And they are using that. I haven't been able to confirm that yet. This was from a developer in the Middle Trinity, which is E-Rath in those counties. I do know that there are a lot of wells in that area that have been going dry.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Reeves. Thank you for letting me speak. I am in the Comanche Peak area. I actually came here from, yes, California, and I'm not, it's very congested over there. The wells go dry. They're doing these subdivisions, they're taking away from the country, the appealing nature of our rural areas. And having a subdivision in, around the corner from me in the country, 15, you know, five miles from the, from the city, is unappealing to me. Maybe you should have a, consider a moratorium on these subdivisions that are coming in. But my, my consideration, my worry is that we're gonna have all this traffic. I ride my horses down the road, that will not be, I won't be able to do that because there'll be a bunch of traffic coming through, and they're not gonna consider us rural people because it's two acres pretty much, city folk wanting to have the view of the country, have a little taste of it. Two-acre lots, you're, you're just gonna get a lot of city people, and they're not, there's, so I, I moved here to Granbury because it was a small community, great, great little town, I loved it, but I, I don't want to be Fort Worth, and that's what we're doing. We're turning Granbury into Fort Worth, and you're gonna have all these, I'm gonna say it, liberals coming from California here, on these two-acre lots. So, sorry, but I don't want that, I came, so please consider what we're suggesting because these developers coming in, and they don't care. They're just coming in, developing these two acres, and they leave, and they leave us with the problems. Not, and then they go make their money somewhere else. They don't care about us, they just care about making money. So I hope you care about your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, are there any other comments of the public?
Negative effect, well, the price point's not gonna be there to sell 10-acre lots, besides the fact that you're probably gonna get sued because they're gonna challenge you as a taking, and then, the price point's not gonna be there. So they're gonna invest in a centralized water system, which then, you have higher density houses, you're gonna have a lot of houses instead of two-acre lots. Instead of two acre lots, you're going to have half acre lots or one acre lots, so...
Yeah, I mean, and, and like I said, I'm, as far as population density, I'm 100% with you. I wish that, you know, there was some mechanism to do this, but without zoning, counties can't do zoning, so without something like that, how do you control the population density? Look at Creston Crossroads, or Pods, if you will. How many, what's the population density up there? Because they created a public water system, and, and it becomes economically feasible to cram as many people into a small area like that as you can. Again, I'm on your side as far as what, what I want this county to look like, but unintended, unintended consequences, you'd mentioned California. I'm pretty sure if you go look through those rules, most of them were written with good intent. Good intentions of trying to resolve an issue, it's the unintended consequences that come out of the backside of it that ends up beating you up, so...
I think one thing is clear about here. I think we need to have a workshop to discuss this thing more. That's what we need to do. I'd like to...
Just to, just to be clear, I'm not changing any densities right now. I'm just holding to what we're already doing. I'm just changing the wording from gross to net, which is what the agreement was. We've held that agreement since y'all made that agreement, it just wasn't in our regs.
Yeah, I mean, I, it doesn't prevent us from visiting anything further to approve the regs right now, because it's what we have right now.
We can do it later.
I'd like to study this thing a little bit more. I mean, are we in any danger of any violation of any laws or something if we don't?
We got some subdivisions coming in that need to be on this, that are starting concept plan right now.
I, if I could throw in a couple of cents, I'm with the judge on this one right now because I think there's some nomenclature issues on what has been presented. I'd like to see the number, the numbers are kind of jumping around. I'd like to...
How? What do you mean, numbers are jumping?
Well, you've got 1.7, then 2.2, then it goes to 5.3. I, I think we need to kind of clean up the nomenclature a little bit. It's kind of confusing.
That's because they're all different sections, and they're scattered out through the, the whole thing.
Right, so...
That's, that's not going to change, because those are the sections I'm changing, unless I just throw the whole thing out and start over.
Yes, and, and one of the, one of the important things with the changes that you made here were, were some of the engineering fees, right? I mean, right now, it's a flat rate, and if something has to go back and be reviewed by the engineer, it's, it's killing his account, and that's...
Also, because, because in the past, we had some issues with what we did versus what the regulation said. So Clint's trying to, he's been working on this for months and months and months, trying to match up the verbiage in our regulation to match up what we do. So he didn't really change anything, even though we could talk about increasing fees, but that could come at any time. And also, we could talk about, it sounds like the acreage is the biggest thing, and there's no reason why we can't have a workshop on that. Bring in the people that might be objected to it, people who are wanting to develop what, what they want, what the court wants, and that's reasonable. But Clint's really not changing any, any of the existing rules.
We can, we don't have to adapt 100%, but we can adapt part of it, like the fees that these people are coming in on. We can adapt that. We don't have to adapt 100% of what we're doing and leave the acreage up to a workshop, can we?
Well, I think right now... If you don't adopt this, that acreage is going to be the same as that, it's just not worded that way.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
You're talking about net acreage. So what does that do? If you have two acres, is the net acreage, you mean, back now on the eastments and all the requirements, does it put in a well?
Net acreage means a lot's going to be bigger, because gross acreage says you've got 17 acres that you're starting with, and it says you can have X amount of lots. So those lots ain't going to be exactly two acres, they may be 1.9 acres. But when it's net acreage, that lot's going to be exactly two acres, so it's going to be bigger.
So it's actually a more stringent requirement to, to get larger.
And that's what I thought when we were looking at some of the other subdivision that's in there. But I think, too, what I think I just heard is you're talking about maybe a similar one now because of some new concept plan that's coming out. And then, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Jeannie. Okay. Well, I liked what she had to say about the wells, especially, I liked what Jeannie had to say about the wells, especially as it came to the drawdown, and, and, and then Commissioner Andrews, like you were saying, I understand, you could maybe create another problem with bigger lots, but you have to do studies. There has to be water studies, and I think that's what Clint's changes, changes call for as well. You can't just come in and say, okay, I'm going to do five acres, and then I'm going to do a community centralized water system. You have to do studies. Am I, am I, I think I'm right? And if the study says, well, hey, over here, this didn't work, y'all aren't going to allow it. At least, that's, that's what my, simplifying it for me would do.
And right now, I mean, the Middle Trinity has a whole lot less population. That area does not have near the population we have. Yes, it has a lot of industrial or commercial uses, a lot of irrigation wells, the dairies, and those kind of things that use lots of water. So they have separate issues compared to what the Upper Trinity has. Clint, it's my understanding that all you're doing here is trying to clean these up. The fees for the redoing our regulations was fairly astronomical.
So redoing it was $160,000. I said, no, I'll just do it myself.
So, right now, what he was just trying to do was clean this up, and this could be revisited and worked over at a better time?
Sounds like, is the only issue is the acreage? That's the only issue you've got with his changes?
Yes.
Right. I just want to know what...
Right, and the current, I mean, the way that you've presented this, this actually, like you said, it increases to an absolute minimum of two acres instead of 1.9 or whatever. And like I said, this isn't a final, this is, this is right now. We could still have a workshop and visit that and adjust, you know, yeah. And then as far as, I think, what you've done here, we've talked about this quite a bit, these are just the changes that you've made. So as far as the numbering and everything, there's not every regulation on this packet, it's just the things that changed.
Right.
That's why those are numbered and brought out there.
I believe it's the text in bold, that are the changes that Clint's making.
That's how your order would be if everything...
Yeah, yeah.
As I, as I mentioned before, I, I do think that this is something that is going, isn't going to be resolved today in talking about it. I do think it's, it's big enough that it's going to demand y'all's attention for a period of time, which is why I recommended a moratorium on new plats and subdivisions. And I'm sorry that it might disrupt somebody else's development plan, but this is important enough for us as citizens of Hood County that we need to pay attention to it. And, and there's never going to be a perfect time where it is not going to affect someone, possibly in a negative way, for us to get our ducks in a row, but we really need to do that. And while I was back there, I was thinking about, when I've read of other counties, and I was reading about the impact fees that, that they had in those counties for new developers. I know that's not something we do here. Is that something we've considered before? Because it does kind of take care of what you were talking about with the, a new developer coming in and saying, well, okay, I'm going to just come on in here and, and have a communal well for everybody, and, and they, they will, you know, if the impact fee is based on population, maybe they would, you know, that would curtail some of that happening. I just, I'm trying to, to look at this from every different angle that I can, and I think that you guys also want to do that, and given the time to really explore the options, and I think that we, Clint, thank you for all the hard work you do, I think that we can really come up with a wonderful way to help Hood County and all the rural areas.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all. I think that, that we're all looking for the same goal, but, you know...
We just need time.
Sure, and I think that there, you know, we have to be careful how we approach this, because there can be, there can be a dark side to, to this stuff.
Sure, sure. And, and that's appreciated, that you have recognized that. So I'm, I'm going to sit down now.
Actually, this developer who has this East Lake, he has another development in Hood County where he has them in 10 acre lots. So I don't know why he can't do it with this, this development.
They have water and sewer, it's like...
Okay.
I don't know what they're doing.
There's another one, yeah, by the elementary school. He has, he has a sign, and he says you can buy 10 acre lots, and he has 10 acre lots on about, there's like 20 of them.
But that's a centralized, did you say that's a centralized system?
No, no, no.
And when, and when you say centralized, it's count, it's public water, public sewer? Okay. So, so that was the other thing about the five acres, and I, I mean, I think we're talking about drawdown, and, and if you have to, the larger lots, I mean, I live somewhere in Alito where they had a situation like that, and it was a community well. And I don't know, I don't remember people complaining, but I, I do see your points. It's still going to be one residence per five acres, per 10 acres, and even if you put in a community well, I think, I just, I don't know. I don't see your drawdown being, I'm not, I have no clue.
Ma'am, let me tell you what I'm going to do.
Yes.
I want to hear from our illustrious county attorney, Mr. Matt Mills. You've been too quiet. We're going to get our members, come on up here, Matt. Tell us what we can do here. Can we adapt some of this? I mean, Clint does a wonderful job. He does a wonderful job. I don't want to step on his toes. He doesn't have a dog in his den, he's just trying to do what the law allows here. But then again, I do think that this thing warrants a little bit more study, and I would really like to do it. So can we grant some of the revisions, or all the revisions that he's made, and then have a workshop and come back, and let's talk about the two acres versus five acres versus 10 acres deal?
Could, could you just have a workshop with the action item and just do the whole thing then, and just table this for today, or, I mean?
Is there any papers, you can table it and do it, or whatever?
I mean, is that...
Well, I don't know whether there's any benefit to actually tabling this. Like I said, the, the primary change is, is for the fees, the engineering, yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't have any objection at all to passing this as presented...
Right.
...today, and then, you know, the, the other stuff is absolutely still on the table. We can look at that, and, and even if we end up taking action at a special called meeting instead of a workshop, we could do something that way.
Right. I mean, I would have to do quite a bit of research.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Nobody called me on this one before court.
In a pinch here, but...
That's what I'm trying to get at, just to get through with this.
Right.
Let's approve the revisions and the changes, but still leave it open about the acreage. That's what they're concerned about here. Let's do the in-depth study on all the various options and have that.
If you leave it open, it's still going to be the same, it's just not worded the same.
Right.
We're still going to have to require two acres minimum, because they got to have two acres to get a well. We let a lot get planted and don't have two acres, and they...
And, and right now, it's gross instead of net, which if we pressed it, we would have a net and we'd gain a little bit.
We can do the same thing, we just don't have it in our regs.
Yeah, right.
Well, I, I need to change. I mean, I...
And Mr. Mills, have you... It's better, it's better for y'all to, to have the way that you proposed changes, because you have to have the full two acres.
Right.
Not the 1.9 or 8.7 or whatever.
Have you had a chance to look at any of these changes yourself? I mean, honestly, the last time I looked at, at any subdivision stuff is when the RV park thing came up five months ago, or whenever that was.
Right.
This wasn't brought to me before court for this, but I mean, it doesn't look like he's making any seismic changes either, so... Yeah, this, nobody, nobody talked to me before this came up for court. Yeah, I mean, it's fine, I'm not saying that he should have, I'm just saying nothing came to me on this before court, so...
Well, thank you. And you're, so I just have another question for you. These other subdivision proposed developments, can't we just stop approving things right now until we get this figured out? Make your cleanup changes, make your changes. But we have so many subdivisions, as Courtney pointed out, that haven't even been filled.
Can we, what we can do, Matt, can we just, let's say we pass it, because we can't have, I don't think the county can do a moratorium and just stop everything. We can't do that.
We get sued over that, I think.
Yeah, we don't have that.
We'll get, we'll get sued by everything. But, but I want to say, can we have a special workshop about talking about the two acres, the clean two acres, later on to just look at that? That's what you're really concerned about on the deal.
Yes, the population density.
Have a workshop and, on that, and have the pros and cons, and have people come up here from the Upper Trinity to talk about the water table and stuff like that, and let's really get into it and see how it's affecting the water table and everything.
Okay.
So I think that's what we're going to have to do.
How do we effectuate that workshop, Judge? I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting you. How do we effectuate that workshop now? Do we, do I come see Ron?
No, we can put it, we can put it in the minutes that we'll have a workshop within a certain amount of time. We can make that motion now.
Okay. Because I would like to bring in people, too, I mean...
Sure, I want to give you time.
Yeah, we'll have enough time, sure. Bring in your experts, and we'll hear from everybody.
Great.
And see what's the right thing to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I guess what we do is to make a motion to pass these. This is to your advantage right now. We can't do that. The county would get sued. This is better for you, because right now, it takes a clean, full, two acres...
To get a well permit.
...to do that. So do I hear a motion?
Well, we need to come out of the public hearing first.
Let me, let me say something about the, let me say something about the workshop. Now, y'all can hold a workshop, y'all can decide what you want to do. You tell me what you want to do, I'll make the change, I'll run the ad in the paper, then we have a public hearing, because that's what the law requires.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What do you have to, you just have no...
Well, we'd have to have a public hearing before we took action on it, so...
Well, we're still in a public hearing.
I'm talking about when y'all have your workshop, y'all decide what y'all want, I'll make the changes, run the ad in the paper, then we'll have a public hearing and adopt them.
Right.
Okay, all right, well, we'll get, we'll do that then. So that's what we will do. So at this time, at 10:27, we're reconvening back into Commissioners' Court. Thank all of you for your comments and public hearing. It has worked. We hear you, okay? So now that we're back in Commissioners' Court, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to accept the updates and revisions to Section 1 Development Permit Regulations, Section 2 Subdivision Regulations and Appendices, and Section 3 Infrastructure Development Regulations for Manufactured Home Rental Communities.
I've been begged by Commissioner Andrews to accept the revisions as stated so clearly by Clint Ed and discussed, and second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, four ayes and one nay. Okay, and we're going to schedule a workshop and do all the notices, and everybody will have a chance to talk about the increased acreage, okay? So, what do you have next, Mr.?
Discuss and consider the final plat of East Lake Phase 1 and Precinct 2. This property is located on West Lanning's Road and Pecan Plantation. The final plat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 2. It will be creating 12 lots out of the James W. Moore Survey Abstract 344, and they will be served by a mud water and a mud sewer. There are no streets proposed to be constructed with this final plat. These lots will access the existing private roads, Lanning's Drive and West Lanning's Road. Staff has reviewed the final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I move that we approve the final plat of East Lake Phase 1.
Okay. Commissioner Cotton has made a motion to approve final plat of East Lake Phase 1. I hear a second. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next.
I'm going to discuss and consider the preliminary plat of Prime Granbury in Precinct 4. The concept plan for this preliminary plat was approved at the November 8, Commissioner Court. This preliminary plat is located at 2825 Alta Vista Court in Granbury and proposed to create nine lots. The property is located in the Rural District and will be served by well and on-site sewage facilities. The concept plant, or the, the preliminary plat proposes to construct roughly 630 linear feet of public asphalt streets. The smallest lot size is 2.04 acres, and the largest is 3.21 acres. There are no variances associated with preliminary plat at this time. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat, staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Questions, comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the preliminary plat of Prime Granbury, as stated by the development.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the preliminary plat of Prime Granbury, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0. Ms. Becky Kidd, financial, thank you, Mr. Clint Head.
Thank you.
Ms. Head, you're looking very fast.
I'm not gonna dig a well, how about that?
Oh, you don't get a break, okay.
And I, and I sympathize with those, I get it.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Today's court, you have invoices totaling $864,271. We have reviewed all these invoices, we've also provided you with a list of expenditures over $10,000. If you have any questions, speak now, please.
So you recommend that we go ahead and pay the bills?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Keep the lights on.
I'll make that motion to pay the December invoices of $864,271.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bills for December, second by Commissioner Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
All right. Now under miscellaneous, first, item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to eliminate the administrative assistant position from the Commissioner's budget and move via a light item transfer the remaining budget of salary and benefits to the line account, quote, "transfer from prior year budget," end quote. Okay. Commissioner Wilson, do you have?
Yes, in light that Shannon Kaiser, you know, has, you know, left the county employment, and minimal, well, not all the Commissioners were utilizing that capacity either, at all. I move, I'm moving that we eliminate the administrative assistant position from the Commissioner's budget and move via line item transfer the remaining budget of salary and benefits to the line item account transfer from prior year budget.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move that money to assist in other endeavors in the, within the county.
Ms. Samuelson, you're noted to speak.
Good morning and Merry Christmas. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Wilson for recognizing the pressure on the current fiscal budget as a result of the unplanned expenses so far this fiscal year since started October 1st. I agree with the agenda item to eliminate the administrative assistant position from the Commissioner's budget as an offset to some of these unexpected expenses. I'm sure this will be one of the first of several decisions that are gonna come before the court to, as the fiscal year continues. As you consider this item, you may have noticed that of the $2,000 education budget for Commissioner Precinct 2, $1,200 has already been spent in the first two months of this year. Knowing that there are statutory requirements for, to attend training as an incoming Commissioner, I discussed with Ms. Kidd how I will, how I will complete my training in the upcoming year. She responded that there would need to be a line item transfer to put additional funds in the education budget to cover my required training. Again, an additional expense that is, was unplanned on the allocated budget. To solve this, I'd like to request that you leave $1,200 in the administrative assistant funding in the Commissioners' Court budget to cover the required training that I will need to attend next year, and to avoid another line item transfer in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Well, you bet.
That makes sense, I mean, leave it.
Judge, can you make a motion for me to move all the $1,200 and put that in your travel line, and then do not take care of that?
Okay, good, okay.
So would you make that part of your motion?
Yeah.
I will amend my motion to eliminate the administrative assistant position from the Commissioner's budget and move via line item transfer the remaining budget and salary of benefits, with the exception of the $1,200, you know, to the transfer for prior year budget.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated and made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, now, item number two, consider and take appropriate action to reclassify an unsealed detention officer position as Sheriff Office TECO Training Coordinator with a salary of $42,848 annually. This reclassified position will be effective Sunday, January 1, 2023, and will offer administrative and training assistance to all departments in the Hood County Sheriff's Office, and we have two illustrious members of the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff himself and Chief Deputy Steve Smith. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. First of all, I'm not trying to create another position, I'm just trying to transfer one open position for this one until the new budget comes, and then, of course, I'm gonna try to get that jail position back. The whole purpose for this is, TECO requires us to have Training Coordinator, we're gonna train in-house for our Commission employees, which are gonna be deputies, jailers, and dispatchers. We have had one of those for as long as I've been here. It fell under the discretion of the Patrol Lieutenant. With the growth that we've had and all of the added mandated courses that the state has put on us, it is time that we now have a full-time position to keep up with all the credentialing, all the training, all the lesson plans, all the instructors, everything that's in that job description that I sent you guys. It's, it's, it's a lot of work. I do have one employee that is ready and willing to do that. He also meets all of the qualifications to do that, and then that's the, the direction we would like to move. It is, the, the salary is a start-in-jailer pay, which is what we currently have open right now to do that. Happy to answer any questions about any of it you have.
One, one thing I'd like to throw out there that you'd mentioned to me is that TECO's year, the regulations that they come out with came out in October 1, just like our fiscal budget.
Their years run the same as ours, too.
And they put in, put in more requirements and more reporting, regulations that you guys have to meet at that point.
Sure, and as well, we also have to meet, on top of the mandated classes, we have to have 40 hours of CEU, or CEU training every two years for every peace officer that we have, and, and it gets expensive sending them out for that. So if we have somebody in-house that can take care of all of that, which we've been doing, it's just, you know, now it's a, more of a full-time position than a part-time position.
Another thing, you know, to, and, you know, the, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, if, you know, some of the training, they're having to go out of county to other, other facilities to get the required training that they have to have, whereas, once this individual takes that position, most of that can be done in county.
A lot of it can, yes, absolutely.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the action to reclassify an unsealed detention officer position as Sheriff's Office TECO Training Coordinator with a JLR-1 annual salary of $42,848.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wilson to approve the reclassification of an unsealed detention officer position for TECO as stated, with stated salary, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS Plan Agreement for Plan Year 2023. Ms. Welber.
Good morning. This is the Plan Agreement for 2023. It's, nothing has changed other than the $600,000 that the court voted to send on November the 29th, which TCDRS did receive. So that did make a small adjustment to our required, required rate. So I believe everyone received the Plan Agreement prior to today. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, I just appreciate your approval for all of the employees.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS Plan Agreement for Plan Year 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS Plan Agreement for Plan Year 2023, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welber. Okay, item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to contribute 2023 funding for the Clean Air Coalition in the amount of $25,000, funds to come from Contract Services. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Judge.
Hey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the time today to speak. Little introduction, I am Joe Drew, I'm on the board of the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, and with me here today is Michelle McKenzie, the Air Quality Program Director for the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. She is obviously our most important asset, and so I'm gonna turn it over to her, let her speak and tell you a little bit more.
Well, thank you very much. All right, Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
And we do want to point out that our current board members, we did have some new ones this, recently, including Chairman is, still remains Mark Franco, we have Joe Drew, John Campbell, Chuck Licata, Brian Carruthers with Granbury ISD, Judge Massengill is our, our new board representative for the Hood County, as well as Mayor Jim Jarrett of Granbury and Mayor Tina Conway from Crescent. We are here to request fiscal year 2023 support for the Hood County Clean Air Coalition in the same amount of $25,000 as was done last year. The City of Granbury has already approved $25,000 for this fiscal year, and we're asking the county to again match this amount. The 2022 ozone season concluded at the end of November with some very high numbers for Hood County and other areas in Texas. The county went from 25 moderate readings and one exceedance day at the monitor in 2021 to 54 moderate readings this year and 10 days that we exceeded the ozone standard. Four of those exceedances were over the 80 parts per billion. This raised our design value at the Hood County Monitor from 64 parts per billion to 69 parts per billion, which is now very close to the 2015 ozone standard, which is 70 parts per billion, which is, that standard is currently under review at EPA, and they expect to have a decision on whether to keep the standard or not by the end of 2023. As the ozone issue is an ongoing concern, and with the reduction in funding from the TCEQ Rider 7 grant, these funds allow the Hood County Clean Air Coalition to continue to work to address the air quality issue. Support of the Coalition provides an opportunity for the county and cities in Hood County to show a unified effort to address air quality for their citizens, as well as provide good faith efforts to keep the county in attainment for the ozone standard and prevent the economic consequences associated with the non-attainment designation. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Talk about a figure, what's that figure if, if we come out of attainment for the county?
If the county goes into non-attainment, we estimated, just for one aspect of it, which is the inspection and maintenance program, which would require emissions testing for every vehicle in the county, we're looking at probably 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars as an expense to the residents of Hood County. That's not taking into consideration the additional control measures that would be required for anybody that brings in business into the county that would require an air permit. Vista Sand is one that actually has to have those air permits and has, Joe's told us before. Yes, it has.
Yeah, it's very serious. I mean, we have to do this. It scared me, that was my first meeting, and I went, yo, yo. I mean, make the motion for the money. This is too important. The downside is huge.
It is, it is, unfortunately.
Yes, I will make the motion to, oh, wait a minute, I was gonna ask you a question. Can you take that out of the Contract Services? You can't? Or you got it then?
General contingency.
General contingency, I'll change that.
Okay.
So I will make the motion then to approve the contribution year 2023 funding for the Clean Air Coalition in the amount of $25,000, with the funds coming out of?
General contingency.
General contingency.
Okay. I second the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0. We'll get you a check to you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, item five, consider and take appropriate action to terminate the vending agreement with Sodexo Services of Texas LP and approve the vending service contract with Vending Concepts. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So the agreement with Sodexo was approved back in August to provide vending services for the Justice Center here. Unfortunately, no machines have been delivered, no services provided, and now they've become unresponsive, so I would like to cancel that and move on. I was fortunate enough to find another vendor, and I'd like to proceed with them.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we terminate the vending agreement with Sodexo Services of Texas LP and approve the vending services contract with Vending Concepts.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to terminate the vending agreement with Sodexo Services of Texas and approve the vending service contract with Vending Concepts, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Next, that's still you, consider and take appropriate action to request New Core Building Systems and their affiliate BND to cancel the emergency management shed contract approved November 11, 2022, and allow Purchasing to put out for bid RFP 2023-002, our emergency management shed. Mr. Tillman.
Yes, so there was a major misunderstanding between the department and the vendor regarding the scope of this project. There were numerous exclusions in the fine print and, that would add up to thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars. So rather than, than bidding out all these bits and pieces to fill in what was excluded, I would prefer to just go out to bid as a turnkey project to one vendor and, and continue in that manner.
I think that makes, that makes good sense, doesn't it? Okay, good deal. Okay, any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we cancel the emerg, you know, emergency management shed contract with New Core Building and their affiliate BND. That was approved on November 11, 2022, and allow Purchasing to put out for bid RFP 2023-002, emergency management shed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to terminate the, or cancel the emergency management shed contract with New Core Building System and their affiliate BND, and allow Purchasing to put out for bid the emergency management shed, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the request of Constable Precinct 1 to purchase a new 2023 Chevy Tahoe, two-wheel drive and rigging, not to exceed $57,000 from Fund 55. This vehicle will replace the 2017 Chevrolet pickup. Yes, sir, Mr. Chad, how are you doing?
Good, Judge. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I originally started looking into this, speaking with Purchasing, Mr. Tillman, and looking at the other constables who have all ordered their new vehicles, and I believe to this time still have not received them, and that was over a year ago, so I told him, yeah, he said it's best to probably start the process. he said it's best to probably start the process. So when I asked him to start looking at something for me, he replied back pretty quick that this vehicle was actually on the ground. So, he said that's very rare, and it was a good price, and so I said I would go ahead and proceed. And the reason there's, my vehicle is having some of the same issues as the other constables. That must have been something that was done to them when they were all put together, because I think we've all had some issues with the wiring and the emergency lights, which doesn't reflect the vehicle in itself as much as more or less batteries and that kind of stuff. And I'm having a few other issues that I don't know if, you know, with budget, my budget won't repair them probably, but it, and that's here to say, I really don't know. But with, with that vehicle being on ground and seeing how long it's taken the other constables to get theirs, I decided to go ahead and submit it, and if the budget allows, I'd appreciate you to approve it. If you have any other questions also.
Okay.
Given the fact that, you know, we've had to wait, and the constables' vehicles that were ordered a year ago are just now becoming available, so, you know, this was, finding one that's readily available now is a rarity.
And the reason I went with the Tahoe, you know, after being in the, in the position for a couple of years, I've not, I've not had a need for a truck. I'm hoping with the Tahoe to get better gas mileage as well, and the bed covers on those trucks, I mean, everything in the bed is a mess always from dust and stuff, so the Tahoe will be a much better area to store stuff. And, and like I said, just for the need, I mean, I don't need a four-wheel drive if, if, I think I have good enough working relationships with the sheriff. If I need something, he'll let me borrow it. And, and I'm, and I'm not keeping my truck, because I've spoken with Constable Ellis, and I know Constable Jordan will, they have a reserve, and they have a vehicle, so if something happens and I need it, we've all, they've agreed to let me use it. So, with a few repairs, that truck can still be usable for somebody in the county, hopefully as long as it'll hold up.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion to grant the request Constable Precinct One to purchase a new 2023 Chevy Tahoe and rigging not to exceed 15, or 57,000 from Fund 55.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the request of Constable Precinct One for the purchase of the 2023 Chevy Tahoe, not to exceed $57,000 from Fund 55, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thank you all very much.
You're very lucky that that vehicle was on the ground at a good price. Good. Okay, item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action for the Sheriff's Office to purchase six new 2023 Tahos with required equipment. Sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, we've got information out to everybody about this, and like the constable said, he was worried about getting things started, because you don't know when you're going to get any of this stuff, and then he got lucky with this one vehicle. But we have no idea when we could get the next vehicles. We're still waiting on one to come in from the last group that we ordered, so we've got five out of the six. You know, we put anywhere between 60, 65,000 miles on the vehicles, all the vehicles, every month, just trying to serve the citizens of this county. So, we just want to make sure we can continue to do that, and so, I know it's a lot of money, but need to ask you if we could order six more vehicles, and then along with the information that you got, is the breakdown on the installation and the equipment of each vehicle, the new radars, we've got a lot of older units with problems that Lieutenant Lysen has had to fix up and get new cables and try to keep things pieced together and running, the graphics, and then the camera system. We needed some new cameras put in there, and so that's all included in the breakdown. You got, each one of you got that, so. Any questions? Otherwise, yeah, I'd sure like to get some ordered, get things going, since we don't know when we might get them.
There are some on the ground. I'm sorry. I apologize, I wasn't told this morning, there was a small tornado, I apologize for my appearance this morning, but what I'd like to say is that there are some on the ground that we've heard, and they were requesting that we get a PO if this is something that y'all are going to approve this morning. So, if you have any questions, I'm here.
How many are on the ground available for purchase? You said there are available?
Yes.
There are some, if you can give me an exact number, but General Motors kind of gave them a Christmas surprise of some Tahos, so including one for Constable, several.
No. So is the one we're still waiting on coming?
It actually is here.
Yeah, it's actually...
Okay.
It is.
We got information, it came in, it's in Jasper, Texas, so, long ways down. So we'll probably end up, they said that it'd probably be after the first year before they could get it shipped to us, so we'll probably send a couple down there to pick it up and bring it back, and get that one going. So I didn't know about the others being, being there, so.
That's information we just found out.
I know I've been told that there's lots with hundreds of these vehicles that are sitting waiting on different ships and all that, so I was told that it'd be a while, so.
All right, Ms. Anderson.
Amazon drone. Yep.
Thank you. I had a few questions, and just in a couple of weeks, I'll be able to ask a lot of these questions beforehand, and Sheriff Deeds, thank you so much, he just handed me this document, which one, my one question was, since it wasn't on the agenda, what was the budget impact? And it looks like it's 424,000. And could you just help me understand, is this a, like a yearly refresh of certain number of vehicles, and if so, why is that not part of the budget process where there's, is this coming from an unplanned? Ms. Kidd?
We used to, in budget hearings, everybody came with a wish list, and then I would put together a package for Fund 55. We wouldn't have done that because I've budgeted enough money for the most part to take care of things like this.
Okay.
So we're good on money here, that's not an issue. It's just, we used to do it now, because if they come up there and we're, you have to bill them anyway, even if you plan for it, and you still have to come forward rolling it anyway, so big expense like that. So, this is a normal request every year anymore.
Yeah, it just, I think it's, so that it's earmarked, or whatever the right word is, that this is, we know that this is an expense that's coming. If you do six a year, or whatever your criteria, what is the criteria? Is it number of miles, or?
Yeah, the number of miles that we put on them, get over 100,000 miles and tend to be unsafe at driving with lights and sirens and responding out there, so we take those vehicles and use them for the investigators' other purposes, and so we try to refresh the, those older high-mileage vehicles with the new ones. And over the years, it's been about five to six every year that we order.
Okay. That was my main question, is why, if we know this is going to be an expense every year for a certain number of vehicles, that we could discuss it during the budget process and put it in the budget so that it, that capital can come, or?
If the funds are there, and imagine that Sheriff's waiting to get the first round before he brought up the second round. Is your mic on? No, sorry.
Okay, that was, that was it. Thank you for the information.
Okay, any other question or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve for the Sheriff's Office to purchase six new 2023 Tahos with required equipment, as stated in the proposal that they addressed.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to purchase six new Tahoe, 2023 Tahos with required equipment for the Sheriff's Office, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries unanimously five zero.
It didn't say Fund 55 at the time, we know that's what you're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Fund 55.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal. All right, Ms. Kidd, you're up. Item number nine, discuss and consider adoption of a resolution directing the redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax bond, Series 2014, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to pay this loan off. We have two years left, but we have sufficient funds to pay this off, saving the taxpayers about $14,000, paying it a year early, freeing up money for jail expansion, buildings for the fire departments. You'll be in excellent shape. When we started this, with me in 17, I think we owed 32 million. After we pay this one off, we'll owe about 5 million in bonded debt and about 5 million to Crescent Bypass, so that's not bad for you, for you guys.
The money's not coming out of the sales taxing, is it?
Actually, it is.
Oh, this is part of the sales taxing?
Yes, which is one of the only things you can do with additional sales tax money is pay off debt.
So we've already approved it?
Yes, but now you're approving me to move forward with the payoff.
Oh, okay.
Will you approve for me to take the money and move it into Fund 92, which is where we pay our debt?
Gotcha.
But this...
Any further question or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Well, in that case, I'll make the motion then.
Okay.
That we, we adopt a resolution directing the redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax bond, Series 2014, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second. Okay, motion been made to, by Commissioner Cotton, to adopt the resolution directing the redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax bond, Series 2014, and second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You're doing a great job, Ms. Kidd. I don't know where you find all this money here, but you're doing a good...
I treat it like it's mine.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action regarding what line item to utilize for the final payment to Net Data. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, we had hoped to be able to pay them proportionate to the service we needed. They didn't accept that. They want the full payment. So, I've sent them the partial payment, around $73,000, and if we do not pay the remainder, they will cut off services as of December 31st, so.
Now, that $73,000, that was just to get us up to December 31st?
Well, December 31st, on some departments, I paid three months on some, five months on some, and six months on some. I was trying to, and we don't have a contract.
Right.
So I'm trying to be as fair with them as possible. They, they kept the money. They said that that was for three months' worth of service on everything. I believe they're sending us $700 back.
Yeah.
So I went and took the original bill, paid the remainder of the original bill, plus, I believe it was $1,100 penalty fee. It came out to $152,324, which we are obligated to pay, or we don't have service.
That would be for a full year?
That will be for a full year on everything we have with Net Data.
So they're going to be collecting money after we also, when are we going to all switch over to Tyler? When is that going to happen?
Drew?
Okay. Gentlemen. I know, right? Jumping in here, moving the podium, sorry. Okay, so right now, for the most part, the county is live on Odyssey, of course excluding Dub's office and Ms. Lang's office. That is Phase Two. As far as Phase Two is concerned, I know Tyler has reached out to both Ms. Lang and Dub to at least get a meeting together to sit down and try to plan out what Phase Two will look like. So I know there has been starting of talks on that, but there has been no dates, you know, actually hard dates on how that is going to actually play out yet. But then, the constables, they will cut over in March. It's the last date, the end of March, March 25th, I believe, is their go-live date to move over, but that's kind of where we're at with everything right now.
The other JPs went live during December already?
Yes, yes, the other JPs are live right now, yes. Everyone is live through the initial plan.
I know there's some other departments that work on other things that we're still doing, I think the Treasury's...
Yes.
Got another date coming up.
They're still, they're still working to move over as well.
They're working on theirs, okay.
Yes, but Odyssey is, is live. This will be Week Two.
The Treasury's not on Net Data.
Right.
Okay, so I have not been given any information as far as Phase Two for dates and...
Sure, I can reforward you that email that Greg sent to you and Dub, and just to put it at the top of your inbox, asking what time, you know, to reach out and sit down, so we can come up with a plan, absolutely.
Okay, well Roland did come into my office and sat down with me, but he basically asked me two questions and then, and then left, so we didn't talk about dates, he said he was trying to figure that out still.
Absolutely, like I said, I'll reforward that email that he sent out, and then we can go over there.
Yeah, no, you don't have to reforward it, I have that, I'm just saying that there was no specific dates.
Oh, yes, I know that. There, there's no dates, they were just reaching out to see when would be a good time to start sitting down to actually go over and try to figure out what kind of a date range we would be looking at to move forward with Phase Two.
Okay, I'm just, was waiting on them, so, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so back to, you're asking for a final payment to, are you talking about another year, 254,000?
Yes.
Well, what, Drew, what will happen if we don't do that? What kind of impact are we going to have if we say no?
I know. To be honest, there is quite a few questions, even myself and Owen, we were actually looking at this, this weekend. We basically shut off the NIC Port to the server to see kind of what services would be impacted. There are a lot of questions right now, because we do not know if certain services directly, once they are done within the Net Data system server, they go straight to where they need to be, you know, the services need to be received or done at, or if they go through Net Data themselves, you know, they are providing the passage to that service, and that would get shut down. There's a lot of unknowns, really. But the server is bought, and because we do own the server, and of course it is our data, that would not be taken away. It's just all the miscellaneous services that would go along with that.
Not real clear?
No, there isn't really a clear answer.
What are the miscellaneous services that go along?
I couldn't, I know e-filing would be one of them, but I couldn't tell you exactly every single service, every single department. I'm sure Owen could probably speak a little bit to that.
You know, Mr. Mills, this sounds like to me, like attorneys, they get a retainer, you know, and they've settled the case, and there's money back in their account, and then we're not going to give it back to the attorney. That's like stealing, isn't it?
I mean, we're paying for potentially a new year, I mean, it's not bank money, but, I mean, seems like they think they've got us over the barrel there, is the bottom line, I mean.
Yeah. Sounds like.
So, I don't know.
So, somebody, but can't explain what the impact is, I mean, that's, maybe Drew can.
So, some of the impacts that we're going to run into, e-payments will be gone, so JP4 will no longer be able to accept any kind of card payments without setting up a third party to go through that. And also, it's more than likely going to impact our CGIS reporting, which we need to keep going. And without it, we don't get support, so even if the CGIS report is working, if we run into an issue and we can't generate those CGIS reports that go out weekly, we're just SOL and have to pay hourly for support.
So in addition to $220,000, sound like going about another $254,000, and then we're going to hope that we can get some of it back. That's where we're at. Is that what I'm hearing?
We're not going to get any of it back.
Ouch.
I mean, the Attorney General can help us out on that. What do you think about that? Tell them it's hostage on that, you know?
So I, I don't have a good place to pay this from. I used Contract Services money that you could have used for the Coalition, Clean Air Coalition, I used that to pay the 220,000 to Tyler that we had passed through one of the other courts. So, I'm hoping that Ms. Lang and the Commissioners Court can come to an agreement that I could utilize Fund 68 monies, because I really don't have any other place for this.
Okay. Well, Ms. Lang, isn't this under record retention with Net Data?
Well, this is the first I've heard of this. I was not approached before court, or contacted, has this request.
No, she was not.
So this has sprung on me here in court. So I'm not going to agree to anything at the, at the moment.
So we have another three weeks to figure it out, though, until, because we're good until...
No, I'm going to pay it, I'm going to use Drew's money. I'm going to, I'm going to pay it, because I don't want to take a chance on getting cut off. So I have the check ready to go, but we could utilize this money. This came up very late last week, and this was a perfect place to discuss it. It's, it's either a yes or no. Again, it's, plenty of money there. We need to get this paid. I have the check ready, we will send it out today so that we don't lose services, but we could utilize a million dollars that's in Fund 68 to take care of this and not burden Drew's budget, because that's where it's having to come from, that's where sufficient budget is right now. But he's got other bills to pay this year. There are other contracts, there are other software updates, annual fees that he's going to have to pay, so, but I need to...
Sounds pretty important.
It is very important.
Yes, so you didn't even contact me to talk about it. I'd like to have some time to research this.
I'm sorry, I didn't contact you and talk about it, we're here now, it came up late.
Look at the statutes. Okay, you're interrupting me. I'd like to look at the statutes, have some time to, to research this, and see what I can pay and what I can't pay, and maybe we could have a meeting.